Would you do the pledge for us, please?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monnet?
I think I'm here, yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Chair Kistner?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen? Seems to be...
I haven't heard from him.
Maybe late?
Okay, the next item is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on this agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussions nor take action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the three-minute time limit. Open public comment? Any public comment? Closed public comment. All right, the consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless this is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommendations. 4.1 is approval of minutes from February 20th and March 20th. 4.2 is a request by the city of St. Helena Public Works Department for sign permit approval in order to place a sign in a temporary public works building located at 1572 Railroad Avenue in the Business Professional Office District. 4.3, administrative decision that the design review approval allowing the construction of a new single-family home, second unit, and accessory structures on the property located at 1057 Fat Avenue be extended until March 2nd, 2019, due to delays in the city's completion of the required utility and or structure improvements.
I'd like to ask the chair to pull 4.1 if you could, please.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve 4.2 and 4.3?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Do I get to go?
I think not. I think you were here too late.
Okay.
You just said, please. Again?
Yes, I'd like to request that...
Microphone.
Microphone, yeah.
I'd like to request that 4.1 be split into two pieces. I wasn't here on the meeting on February 20th. So if you can, I would like to split it into two pieces.
Can you take care of that? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve it with the...
There's two set of minutes. Chair Kistner, would you like to call two separate votes?
No, well...
I would prefer it that way, if that's at all possible.
Okay. All right. Have a vote on 4.1. Do I hear...
You're gonna need to do a vote for the minutes of February 20th, 2018, and then a vote for the minutes of March 20th, 2018.
That's correct.
Yep.
I move approval of the minutes of February 20th, 2018.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Abstain.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. 4.2?
I will also, I will move the minutes of March 20th.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. So 4.3 has been approved. Ms. Hines?
4.2 and 4.3 have been approved.
That's correct. Next thing is the public hearings. We have a continuance request for a demolition permit and design review to demolish existing single-family residence accessory dwelling structures and construct a new single-family residence accessory dwelling unit and detached garage at 1827 Vineyard Avenue in the medium-density C Residential District.
Before we go forward, I need to disclose that I went to see the story polls and the applicant was there and the two, three people that had interest in the house that is owned by the Methodist Church were there. And we, I looked at the polls and we had some discussion.
State report, please.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. Good evening, commissioners. The project before you, as Chair Kistner stated, is a continuance of a request for a demolition permit and design review to demolish an existing single-family residence and the accessory structures on the site. And proposal to construct a new single-family residence accessory dwelling and detached garage at 1827 Vineyard in the medium-density residential zoning district. The project was heard by the planning commission on March 20th, but was continued to April 3rd in an effort to respond to a neighbor request and provide time to install story polls to depict the proposed height of the rear portion of the house, canopy roof, and ADU, which extend along the portion of the lots abutting, the portion of the lot that abuts 1835 Vineyard and 1703 Doris. This was required, requested to obtain a better understanding of view shed changes to the abutting properties. The story polls were put up for six days. In addition to the polls, tape was added to represent the proposed roof lines. The story polls reflect the applicant's offer to reduce the building height and canopy height. They exhibit a height as measured from finished grade of approximately 14 feet 9 inches for the ADU and main dwelling at the rear property, and approximately 13 feet for the patio canopy. It's notable that the finished grade level is expected to be about 20 inches deeper than existing grade due to excavation. Planning staff did conduct site visits to document the story polls, and they anticipated changes to the view shed, which I documented here. So this is the view from Vineyard Avenue frontage, I think, right in front of the two houses. This is a view from the opposite side of Vineyard in front of 1835 Vineyard and 1703 Doris. You can just see, I think, the top of the canopy there. And then this is just a view of the story polls put up and the variation in height between the canopy over the covered patio and that of the ADU and the main house. And then this is taken standing at the front of the patio from the backyard of 1835 Vineyard. And that's looking at the canopy there. And then this is standing at the patio rear. And then this is sitting at the patio. And then here are some photos from 1703 Doris. This is looking out the doors in one of the bedrooms. There. And that's looking northwest. And that is all I have in terms of photos. Staff maintains their previous recommendation, which is to approve the project, but would like to add the condition to require that the reduced height as offered up by the applicant be added to the resolution. And I believe that the applicant's also here to present, but I'm happy to...
That what be added? Could you just repeat that? I didn't hear it. Would that what be added?
We, staff recommends that a condition be added that would reflect the revised height that the applicant had offered.
Are there any questions, staff?
I do. I have a question. On page 91 of 131, the water report, it talks about...
The water report talks about, you know, a three-bedroom, total bedrooms for a six-person total. And I thought that, doesn't it go by the state law? You have two people per room plus one. So that should be seven. And the four-bedroom one should be nine. Or are water reports, do they base those numbers on something else?
Number of bedrooms, not number of people.
Right, number of bedrooms. But the state says two for...
It's 150 gallons per bedroom, correct, Erica?
But how to determine the number of bedrooms? The state determines it, two people per bedroom plus one.
That's a small term.
And so I'm, no, that's for housing density. It's state law. So I'm just wondering if this goes by, if this uses something different, that's all. I just wanted clarification on that, because that's my understanding.
Perhaps the applicant's team can speak to that.
Okay. Or is that just for multifamily? I mean, that's what I've read in the state law. Okay, well, I just didn't understand that, and that's the only reason I'm asking.
I think different formulas are used for different purposes. 150 gallons per bedroom would be a standard water use and waste generation factor for purposes of designing septic systems. And it assumes two occupants per bedroom, but that's all in the context of water and waste treatment, where for other purposes, different occupancy loads are calculated.
Okay, thank you. That is correct.
Any other questions? Would the applicant like to address the commission?
Good evening. I'm Susan Dupree of 1727 Vineyard Ave., and I'm the owner of...
Speaking of the microphone, please.
Sorry. Very nervous. And I'm the owner of 1827 Vineyard Ave. And first, I'd like to thank you again for hearing my project a second time, and also for taking the time to go up to the property. I know your time is valuable, and I appreciate your doing that. I also wanted to thank the staff who've had to work hard over the last two weeks. We've all had lots of questions. Neighbors have had questions. The staff has had questions of us, and it's taken up a lot of time. My husband and I really appreciate all the effort that staff has put into the project. And I also want to thank my neighbors, who, you know, had to have story polls up in front of them and people tromping around their yard and me asking them for different things and whatnot. And I appreciate that as well. Had a discussion at the church's property one day that took up their time, and Frank had to come over. And it's just been a lot for everybody, and I think we all are hoping it will come to a conclusion tonight. I wanted to take a minute to talk about the regulations themselves for just a bit this evening. Our city regulations speak to compatibility with the area. So that word compatibility is used throughout the regulations. Interestingly, and I was a little surprised, I couldn't find anywhere that the regulations actually use the word "view." So I thought I'd take a few pictures, which I'm putting up here, of what most of the backyards in our neighborhood look like. And I'm gonna start with my backyard. Suddenly one day, that red structure appeared. It was, the structure was always there. It wasn't red before, so it sort of jumped out at me. You can see, it is literally touching my fence. I don't think it's five feet away from my fence. And let's see. Where am I? That's on the other side of my backyard, another structure that's right there, up close and personal. This is my neighbor's backyard. That's the house that's right next door to her. This is something that the commission approved recently on the Obershultes, right behind the Obershultes property. That new structure is, this is actually a very favorable picture. It looks a lot higher than that when you're standing in their backyard, which actually has a balcony that faces into their backyard. This is another structure in my neighborhood. It's on Scott Ave. It's one of the houses that was noticed for this hearing. It's obviously up there in height. It's certainly more than the height of what I'm proposing. That's the front side of the house that you just saw with the balcony. Here's another house on Scott Ave. that's fairly new. This is the house on Vineyard Ave. that you just approved maybe a year ago. It's 25 feet in height. The house next door to it is probably, on one side, is probably half that height. Okay. So I'm gonna stop here for a minute, just to say that most of the lots around my neighborhood, back up to other streets, I'm sorry, most of the lots around here, back up to one another because of streets that are parallel to one another. So we're, most of us are surrounded on three sides by other houses and other structures. It's rare to find a 20-foot setback out there, to tell you the truth. Not that that's anybody's fault, it's just what's happened over the years, and probably the regulations have changed and whatnot. Many are only five feet in distance. Most of us have had our views blocked by other houses, too. And we've blocked other houses as well. And that's the nature of development when you're developing in a compact city center. And that's the character of our neighborhood. As you can see from the photos that I'm gonna show you now of the church's property and from the Curls, my story polls are very, barely visible to the street. In fact, from this shot of the Curls, which is where the front door is, you can't see the story poll, and you can still see mountains. Now, I admit that from the bedroom of Sharon's home, that that view, that one window, will be blocked. And she was pointing out to me earlier, which I think, you know, we knew that her, the backyard, that the yard that's behind it will be blocked, too. But there's lots of views out here. Every time you enter the house, looking out your windows of the house, there's still lots of lovely views. I purposefully put the accessory unit at that end of the property, at the Curls end of the property, because it's a smaller structure. It's only 624 square feet, that guest unit. And that's even though the views at this end of the property are the best views. The farther you go towards the Curls, the better the views are. So we put that smaller part of the home there purposefully. At only 624 square feet, that building is smaller than both the Curls houses and the church's house as well. And it's about 13 to 13 and a half feet. That's what it will be above the existing grade when it's built. That's what the story polls show as well. And certainly, a structure of that size is compatible with the area around it. The rest is the roof line, which at most would be four feet 3 inches wide, and I'll show you a sketch in a minute so that you can look at that, which covers an outdoor room. This outdoor room has no front or back. It's kind of a non-room. And the purpose of not having a back is to, again, let light in to the church property, to let some views go under, which you could see under the tape, still have some of the view. That was purposeful, in an effort to, one, let us use the property at that end by making use of it as an outdoor room, and pushing the smaller, smallest part of the house to that far end, to not overwhelm those properties. Our house is planned to be under the 18-foot CCR height restrictions, which, as I told you before, my property isn't subject to. But these are CCRs, again, which both the church and the Curls agreed to in writing, which is an agreement that 18 feet is acceptable. I'm under 18 feet. The house is actually about half the height of what the city allows in the neighborhood, that being a 30-foot restriction. And as I said before, we declined to put a peaked roof in. In fact, I let an architect go because he was insistent on a peaked roof, and I wanted to do a flat roof to try to keep the height down and try to keep the overall scale of the feeling of the building down. I think that what we've planned there is compatible with the neighborhood. I like my neighbors. I've had very nice discussions with both Sharon and Burke and his wife, and this isn't about that. It is about, we bought this lovely piece of land to put our dream house on, and we want to take advantage of what we bought. In addition, these neighbors were both given the opportunity to buy that part of the lot that's in front of their lot. My next-door neighbor on the other side, Dick Martin, actually had this property under contract before I did, two years ago. And when he did that, I think in an effort to reduce the expense of the purchase price, he went to both the church and to Mr. and Mrs. Croll and offered to let them buy the piece of the land that was right in front of their property. So they didn't have to buy the whole thing, just the slice in front of each of them, and in that way, their views would have been protected forever. That was declined, and so here I am. Before my husband and I bought this property, I actually read all of your regulations, and I met with the city. I came in and met with the city before I finalized my purchase, to be sure of what I could do on this property. And my predecessor's plans were there, which gave me a little bit of a guide, and it certainly allowed me to know what the setbacks for the property were, because they were all shown on the property, on the site plan, rather. I confirmed that there was no view shed ordinance. And through this due diligence, I felt that I knew what I was getting into. With a commercial property, you're allowed to option it, and then you go and you go through your development, and if you don't get your development, you can pull out. But in a residential property, you can't do that. You don't get to option it. If you don't buy the property, and usually in cash, in a pretty short order, you're not going to get it. So I didn't have the opportunity to come here, spend a year planning, and come to you to talk about this. I had to buy the property, which I did. But I did everything that a person could in order to figure out what I could do here. And the purpose of regulations is to let people know what they could do. Everything I learned confirmed that we could build our dream house on this gorgeous property along the vineyards. So we've met every city regulation as attested to by the staff. We've asked for no special treatment, no variance, no special exception. We planned a house that you practically can't see from Vineyard Ave., lower than the CCRs, half the height of what the city allows, and which has been thoughtfully planned, as I explained in great detail at the last hearing, and which you complimented me on, which I appreciate. And the other four of my neighbors who can see the house have all sent in letters of support. This is as much as I can do, and it's as much as I think that we should be expected to do, because the regulations don't ask for more, and actually, I think they ask for less than what we've offered, and we offered it in advance. So in closing, we've worked hard to build a house that's acceptable to the vast majority of the 40 families notified of our application. It meets the city's codes. It's well-planned. The staff has recommended that it be approved. And my husband and I ask that you approve our plans tonight so that we can build our dream home on this lovely property, which we intend to be our last home. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
I just wanted to show you, I'm sorry, one last slide. That I just had my architect draw up this rendering behind you so that you could see and be sure that you like the change. We had offered at the last meeting to reduce the connection between the guest house and the main house to 2 and 1/2 feet from 4 feet 3 inches. That's, the top ones are what were originally planned. The bottom one is what we had offered. So I just wanted to be sure you had a chance to see that.
No questions? Open public comment? Is there any public comment?
Hello, Sharon Croll, 1703 Doris. And thank you very much for granting the continuance. I had a, it was one of my children's spring break, so I had a pre-planned plane ticket, so I really appreciate it. And also, I just think it's important, this is a big change in our neighborhood. We've owned this house for 18 years. We've rented it below market for that entire time, and we're doing some renovations now, but planning to do so. It's sort of our, one of our contributions to affordable housing here. And just to correct the record, Dick Martin did offer, when he was in escrow, he did offer it, but I couldn't buy my piece unless the Methodist Church bought their piece, and they refused that. So then I couldn't buy my piece. But anyway, and just, Susan alluded to this, because we talked about it. My lot is also a strange, because it's a corner lot. So my backyard is the section that looks into her yard now, because I have a 20-foot setback on the front and the side, and then I have a 10-foot side yard bordering the Methodist Church. So that is the main part of our yard there, and the master bedroom does look onto it. And I think a lot of this is about communication, because what I learned at the first hearing, when I watched the tape, was that Susan was considering the neighbors during her planning, but we never spoke. She never called us. So anyway, the first I saw of her plans was when they got posted to the city website. And I had questions about the setbacks, because, and so I talked to Noah, the setbacks for rear, side, and side yard, and who determines that in a six-sided lot? And it seemed to me, and so it was decided based on Vanessa Von Hessler's original plans. Her plans, she engaged the neighbors from day one, and her plans had a very open backyard, so nobody was concerned with what the setbacks were. But it just seems a little odd that the larger setbacks, the 20-foot setbacks, are where it doesn't matter. In other words, the 20-foot setback, which was determined to be the side, is on basically a vacant parcel, well, I guess the Gambles own it, where Doris could be, the city could continue Doris. And the rear, her entire home, the rear of her home is a 10-foot setback, even though that's really the rear of her house, right behind us, including the mechanicals and everything else. So it just seems like the way they chose what was the rear and the side didn't really make sense to me, and I have some questions about it. When we met, I did meet with Susan, I asked her if it would be possible, because it's true that my garage looks out onto where her ADU unit is, and I asked her if it would be possible for her to move that over 10 feet. She said she couldn't, because the city had a 20-foot setback there. But now I realize, after talking to Noah, that it's actually somewhat discretionary. Can I speak for a few more minutes? And so it's basically up to you. She refused to do that, because she said it would wreck her plan. And I appreciate the story polls, Lester, that was a great idea. And what the story polls, and I'm not contest, I think I'm really appreciative of the height. I'm not, I don't have any issue with the height of the building. What the story polls indicated to me, which was painfully obvious when I saw them, was that but for the continuous roof line, there would be no problem. The Methodist Church and my house would retain a view, and it would be not a problem. So it's really just the contiguous roof line, which also sort of, I know that there is a public policy in favor of ADUs, but when it's all connected in one building, it makes it really not so much a possibility of a second dwelling unit, but it's connected to the house. Anyway, and I just want to say, I completely accept the fact that in St. Helena, we do not have a view shed ordinance. It's up to her. She can do whatever she wants, but I, it's a little, but I think this is maybe an opportunity for us to revisit, now that a lot of older homes in our neighborhoods are being built and are being torn down, and larger houses are being built. Maybe we should revisit the possibility of view shed ordinance. But it just seems very sad that 50-year-old views from two homes are going to be obliterated just to have an outside, an outdoor room with it. So I was just suggesting, and she and I were talking about this before the hearing, would it be possible to have it thinner, to have it not a 2 and 1/2-foot ceiling, but something a little bit less obtrusive, I guess? Anyway, thank you for your consideration, and again, I really appreciate the continuance.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Bells. I live at 1520 Hillview Place.
My name's Tom Bell, and I live at 1520 Hillview Place. Does this work? Can I try and, I want to see if I can show you some pictures.
He's going to show his house. He's dropped me over there three times this year. Yeah, it's a good picture, David.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
So's that one.
I'm here this evening because I'm not either for or against this project, but I would like to echo something that Ms. Crowell said. And that is, is that the current criteria that the city uses to determine whether or not a project can be built does not include view shed. And if I had known that there was any room for any consideration on that on the part of the Planning Commission, I would have come forward about a year ago myself to ask for some variances on view shed. But I wanted to show you tonight, this will come up on the screen. This is the house that I lived next door to for 40 years. A year ago, the people who bought that house, about three years ago, decided they wanted to put an addition onto it. This is my house, and this is the house that I just showed you that I live next to.
Mr. Bell, would you please speak into the microphone so the public at home can hear?
I'm sorry. This is my house on the right-hand side, and the house that I'm talking about is on the left. You can see the single-car garage there. The applicant went ahead and put a second-story addition on that house. And basically, this is what it looks like. This is what it looks like now. It's well within all of the setbacks. It's 24 feet, seven inches tall. It is 20 feet from the front, and it's 20 feet from the back. This is what it looks like. Next to me, my house is directly on the right-hand side. It's just very disappointing when you have a home that you've lived in for 40 years, and you looked on the Western Hills and enjoyed that view for so long. And then all of a sudden, a neighbor comes in and builds something like this next to you. The house was built within the very minimal amount of tolerances to meet the code sections. And it actually shades my solar system that I have on my house during the wintertime, when the sun is low. And it's something that was approved by the city based upon the fact that it meets all the requirements. And again, there's nothing I can do about this now. I mean, it's there. I'm going to live with it the rest of my life here in St. Helena. And it, when I look out of, all I see is a great big white wall and a 24-foot ceiling. And I would encourage, I'm here tonight just to encourage the Planning Commission, and the city for that matter, in the future, to value view shed because it is important. And I feel that my home value has been decreased since this house has been built next to me. And I just kind of wanted to take the time to show you that tonight. And I empathize with the people who are, who potentially may be losing some view shed on Vineyard. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
Hi, Donna Hines, Voorhees Circle. I just wanted to say a few words in support of the project. I understand what this gentleman was saying about view shed, but the applicant has, I think, gone to the most extreme she possibly could to keep her height low, as she said. I mean, it's, I don't know exactly, like 14 feet. I mean, that, the massing is not there. I think she's just really done a tremendous job of, you know, designing something that's appropriate for the lot that she purchased. I know when this lot came on the market, it was highly desirable. It was, you know, several people were trying to get this lot. And I think it's important that when someone buys an expensive piece of property like this, you know, they, and they do all the work that she did with checking with the city, that, you know, they are able to build something that's reasonable within our guidelines. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment?
I'm Pastor Burke, as you may recall from a couple of weeks ago, from 1835 Vineyard Avenue. And I appreciate meeting with you again and all that my neighbor is saying, and other neighbors also. I think what I'd just like to bring up again, staying away from the view shed question for a moment, since that has strictly speaking no bearing on this discussion, is that the church, as owner of the property, while I was not there when the opportunity to buy the adjacent parcel that would be backing up to the backyard of the parsonage currently, you know, we are not-for-profit. We are a faith community. And that's no one's fault but our own. But we need not-for-profits. We need faith communities in our larger community. They make a big difference. They bring spirit. They bring a sense of something greater than our individual needs and give a place for people to come and worship, to question, to ask why we're here and what our purpose is. Once again, this is not in any way to do with this particular discussion, but I want to give a sense of context. Because we don't have the money to be able to spend, I'm not sure what that parcel would have cost, but I'm thinking half a million, possibly, something like that. We don't have the money for that. We don't have the money to offer those kinds of gracious lifestyle aspects that much of St. Helena does offer. But what we do offer is a church that is the oldest house of worship, to the best of my knowledge, in Napa County. And the parsonage is part of that, because the parsonage is where this not-for-profit puts its pastor. Because it is subsidized housing, it is low-income housing. Because someone who would come to work at a church cannot afford to live in St. Helena. The church is needed, but it's difficult to afford to live here on the amount of income one makes as a pastor or as a church director of any kind. So I'd like to ask you to consider that this is, brings up a larger issue on, do we want to support the work of faith communities of not-for-profits in our larger community by allowing housing to be here, even in desirable neighborhoods, that will give people a place to live, so they can continue to do work that I hope is for the greater good? And I'm not going to go into any religious talk, but I hope that what we're doing is making a difference in the quality of life in St. Helena, and the parsonage is part of that. So the view of the parsonage is also part of that, not only for myself, but for hopefully pastors many years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Leeds, and I live at 1579 St. Helena Highway, and I'm a member of the Methodist Church. And what Tom said about staying within regulations, just is, is this project, it speaks to that because just because something is legal and you do it legally, doesn't mean it's ethical. And I think what Sharon said, to remove that covering over the breezeway or the walkway or whatever that is, would satisfy the neighbors that are objecting so vehemently to this, to losing their beautiful, beautiful view. Okay, the parsonage would lose the view to the left, it would lose the view to the right, but with that, indicated by the story polls, if that was gone, it would be acceptable. It wouldn't be great, but it'd be acceptable. And it would be an ethical, morally correct thing to do. To be in the letter of the law, as we know, the letter of the law doesn't mean it's right. It's just the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Close public comment. David, would you like to start your discussion, please?
First of all, I should disclose that I'm actually the son of a preacher man, so.
Go ahead, sing that for us, David.
Yeah. So I love that song, because, you know, it's a great song. We don't regulate views in town. It's a real shame about the wall that's next to the, to the public, the member of the public who spoke tonight. That's, that's a, not a success, I don't think, just because the wall itself is unpleasant, sadly. But we don't regulate view sheds, and we don't, you know, we have specific regulations in my mind regarding sizing. And this fits within it. I would prefer that the permanent shade over the porch would be fabric, like I mentioned two weeks ago. I think it'd be cool. But I've seen nothing in the regulations that disallows people from putting up permanent structures to provide shade. And we can't make policy on the fly. It's just not the way good government works. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
I think this is symptomatic of a problem we're having throughout town. As the prices go up and up, and as long-term residents either move or sell, or pass on in some cases, that we get large structures on lots. And I think Commissioner Hardy brought this up, that because of the cost of the property, you are going to get large structures on lots, pretty much as large as you can get. This is not as large as you can get. So I can't but help but think that the owner hasn't come forward with a two-story structure that fills the FAR requirements to within a gnat's hair. This is not one of those structures. However, because it is the view lot, and she owns the view lot, and this meets our rules, I think we'd have trouble saying no to a structure that's well under the FAR requirements, well under the height limits. She's worked to try and make it as low as possible. We don't have a view shed ordinance. We're going to, I think, work our way backwards into one as we go through looking at design standards. But even if we looked at design standards for this kind of lot, it would still be one It's a very nice structure, high design, modern in style, and obviously not inexpensive. And that's where the conflict comes. And right now, I don't think we have any way of dealing with it other than as presented. We can't say no because we think it's going to block somebody's view. And as it stands, she could plant a whole row of Italian cypresses right next to the fence, and it wouldn't even come to us.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Thank you, Chair Kistner. In a lot of ways, it seems to me that we're hearing and wrestling with conflicting expectations. On the one hand, the expectation that a wonderful view would be there indefinitely. And on the other hand, the expectation of the applicant, that she would be able to develop her property in a manner consistent with the city's ordinance. The, you know, sort of closet historian that I am, I felt compelled to try to understand how this rather unusual lot came to be. And, you know, can you display page 75 of the Stafford Forest, please? I'm referring to the page, we'll have it up on the screen shortly, that displays the assessor's parcel map page that includes the subject property. This end of Vineyard Avenue was created by a subdivision map in the early or middle 1950s. I looked at the map, I didn't bring it with me. That's before St. Helena had a general plan, I believe that's before St. Helena had a zoning ordinance. And we can see from the way in which Doris Avenue was stubbed out, that the property owner who submitted that map expected that, and perhaps the city expected, that there was likely to be a future subdivision in the adjoining property, which clearly has not happened. But if we look right at the row of parcels that include the church parcel and the Crowell parcel and the applicant's parcel, it's going to be hard. Actually, you can even see here on display, beginning at the corner where the Crowell parcel is, these are parcels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 from that original subdivision map. Parcels 4 and 5, like the applicant's parcel, were extended to the rear. That was a bit earlier. That was in the 1970s. A man named Charles Nichols owns the large tract behind Vineyard Avenue there, and he sold a piece to extend lots 4 and 5. And then Joe Potter, in 1991, I suspect realizing what his neighbors had done, decided that he would go to Mr. Nichols and see if he could add land to his lot. And then that was done by lot line adjustment. At the time, the lot line adjustment was approved, only the original Lot 3 was zoned The large parcel that Mr. Nichols owned, I want to say it was A5, I'm not sure, but it didn't have the same zoning. Lily might remember, she was helping me do some of this research today. But regardless, it didn't become residential zoning for the whole property until the general plan update and the zoning update that occurred just a few years later in 1992, 1993. So, you know, that, you have two critical moments in terms of the result that has now come home to roost for the Crowells and the parsonage. One is the time of the lot line adjustment approval. And then the second is the time when the zoning map and general plan designation are changed. But obviously, if there were any objections at those times, they were unsuccessful. And so for, I have a harder time with the math as I get older, but I think it's now 27, 28 years since the lot line adjustment was approved and just a few years shy of that. that since the rezoning and general plan update. So, for 25 years, more or less, this property has been zoned for development, including the extension that goes behind parcels 1 and 2. And here, I'm not even sure that it's quite fair to us, you know, trying to navigate this process as appointed representatives of the city or to the applicant, to think of it as a view shed issue. I don't really believe at any point we're likely to adopt an ordinance that is going to have the effect of telling people who own an undeveloped property that they can't build on it. I don't think, I just don't think that's feasible at the end of the day. I can see a lot of impetus for revisiting our design review standards. We've already had some discussions of that. Concerns about bulk, about density, and about height are all going to be in play. But I'm not sure any of the things that we might do and are likely to do to reduce some of the impacts of the turnover and redevelopment that's now going on would lead to a different outcome in this case. Because honestly, I think the applicant has come in with a design that is so much below, especially with respect to height, anything that looks like maximum potential, that it's hard for me to imagine it would be any different even with an updated set of standards in terms of the outcome. And that's really how I see it. So, and I would also say, since view sheds been brought up a lot tonight, although one can do it, I'm sure, a number of ways, the view shed regulations that I'm most familiar with protect the public's view. The county view shed ordinance is a good example of that. It doesn't have any effect on what we flatlanders can do. It's all about regulating what other people can do on the hills that all of us look at. And it's specifically written to regulate projects that are visible from public roads, from public places. I honestly think if we were to undertake an approach that regulated what neighbors could see from any part of their backyards, we would be very, very deep in the weeds in a big hurry. So, to be honest, I think this is a painful example of what can and is likely to continue to happen when we have properties zoned for development and vacant adjacent to long-existing homes with property owners who may in fact have occupied those homes for decades. And then someone finally comes to develop and it's a startling and, you know, significant change for the people who lose their views. There's nothing about that I like. But I think for this application, under the set of rules that we have, in fact, the applicant's done more than we can require.
Commissioner Monet?
Well, not surprisingly, I'm thinking a little bit differently. First of all, I think, you know, this is the old contest between individual rights and community rights, impacts on the community. And I remember when I first was on the planning commission, I got a textbook on planning from a person in graduate school for planning. And I was struck by one thing. It said that there is no such thing as property rights. You have privileges when you own property. It's like a driver's license. You have, there are lots of rules and regulations. You just don't get to do whatever you want. We used to, especially in the West, you know, I mean, we're a young country. But as, you know, as things get more crowded, that's not the case. So, it's always the contest between what the individual has, is expected, you know, to be able to do, and how much they are required to consider what the community wants if those things are in conflict. And our tradition is very much in favor of the individual prevailing, and I think things are maybe starting to change. But my sense is, what if when people had a project and they went into the city to see what was allowed, that before they did the project, they also had a meeting with every neighbor to see what the neighbors thought should be allowed? What if, just imagine, John Lennon, wherever you are, imagine if that were part of the process as much as going to the city. And imagine if these developments all had to come out, nothing could be done until there was consensus of the people who were affected. I mean, that obviously is way far away from what we do, but that's what I like to imagine in this case. For example, there are apparently two things that could be done that would satisfy both of the neighbors who are being so impacted by the, by losing, not a view shed, but the quality of their life. I mean, a view shed is part of the quality of your life. We don't have to focus on the view shed aspect of it, even though that is what we're talking about. And, you know, if the second unit were moved over 10 feet and if the, if the outdoor room weren't there and the rest of it could be, then everyone would have something of what they wanted. And that would be a compromise. And that's what I would like to see. But obviously, I'm in a minority here, but I think that's what the discretionary stuff is about. How can you guys all get together and make a compromise? But with respect to the objective criteria, under design review, number two talks about compatibility with the immediate environment of the site. Number three talks about, well, number eight especially, talks about whether the planning and siting of the various functions and buildings on the site create an internal sense of order and provide a desirable environment for occupants, visitors, and the general community. So, we do. And number six, we do have, you know, requirements or design review guidelines that we can look at that do include something other than meeting the objective criteria of the ordinances and the setbacks and that sort of thing. So, I would want to see, I would want to see the guest house moved over 10 feet and the outdoor room not happen. And that would mean that some of the applicant's dreams wouldn't come true. And it would mean, but she would have some of her dreams. And the rectory would have some of their dreams, but not all of them. And the renters at Ms. Kroll's house would have some of their dreams, but not all of them. So, that's, that's what I would like to see. So, I hear what everyone else is saying, but I think that that thinking does not have to, is not written in stone and that we don't have to stay there. We can start the process of changing our way of looking at what we do with private property and how we treat each other as a community. So, I would support this project with those, with those modifications.
Well, number one, I like the project. I think it's a good project. I made the suggestion that she move the ADU last week, but I don't think we have any choice with an ADU anymore. That's proprietary and there's no way we can deny that. So, Ms. Monet, we can't deny the ADU at all. So, I'm going to call for a vote.
I didn't say we should deny it.
Do I hear a motion?
If, if, if I can, I don't want to quite make a motion at this point, but I would like to consider something.
Go ahead.
On the outdoor room, as it stands now, it looks to me like they could drop curtains on both sides of that outdoor room if they wanted to at a later date, correct? Is there any way in this resolution, we can make that difficult to impossible?
I don't believe so.
Because it's temporary. She agrees to it? Is that okay?
Voluntarily so. I don't think we have anything that we could put in to compel her to do that. Again, these things stay with the land. She can sell it at some point in the future. There's no code restrictions against it. So, I think that would be a tough one.
At what point does an outdoor room become an indoor structure? I mean, if I put up heavy plastic curtains and then heat and cool the area, is that now indoors?
John, an ADU can be either indoors or outdoors.
I'm not talking about the ADU, Grace. I'm talking about the open, the open breezeway, if you would.
So, it's defined from a porching perspective, I believe, in our, in our, in the city rules and regulations. Am I not correct?
The code.
In the code. Thank you. It needs to be blocked on three sides. Isn't that correct? With fixed walls.
Structures where at least three of the sides are unenclosed are exempt from FAR. I don't know if that's the code provision you're speaking of.
Yeah, we have no limit on how big they can be either.
Right. But the two, there's nothing.
I will make a legal agreement with my two neighbors.
Would you step up the microphone, please? Thank you.
I will make a legal agreement. I'll write a letter that's signed by me to both of my neighbors, that I won't enclose that room and that I won't put any curtains on it. I make that commitment to you and to them.
I wouldn't include it in the resolution. I don't think we can.
I don't think we can.
No, it'd be a side agreement.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the, or accept the staff recommendation to approve the project with the new height reduction requirements as offered by the applicant included.
Go here, second.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Knutson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
No.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Kissner? Yes. Thank you. Let's let them leave. You guys want to take a break? Well, we might as well take a break. They're going to.
The upside of having a real estate lawyer in the commission. It was a team effort.
Now, they're not ready for one yet. It's a request by Mary Volkov for a short-term rental permit to rent her single-family home located at 1136 Hudson Street in the medium-density residential district in accordance with the requirements of the short-term rental ordinance. Have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Kissner. The property owner, Mary Volkov, has submitted an application for a short-term rental to rent her three-bedroom home located at 1136 Hudson in what is a traditional residential neighborhood in southwest Saint Helena. It is zoned medium-density residential. Her home is a single-family residence and is supported by two covered and two uncovered parking spaces. If you have a larger car, that may be one covered and one uncovered. The applicant travels maybe quarterly for work and would like to rent her home when she is away. She would obtain a property management company who would manage the property in her absence. Any short-term rental requires a permit to operate within the city in order to impose restrictions and standards to minimize impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. As detailed in the staff report and draft resolution, the applicant is a city resident who currently lives on site and has owned her home for approximately 15 years. In reviewing the short-term rental ordinance or requirements, the subject application appears to meet all criteria established for the approval of a short-term rental permit, given that the applicant's a city resident, occupies the house as her primary residence and has owned it for 15 years. At present, six of the maximum 25 short-term rental permits allowed under the ordinance are available. Short-term rentals are permitted use within the medium-density residential district. And based on the specifics of this application, it does appear to meet the criteria for a permit. It would not generate negative effects to the neighborhood. And last, the city would benefit from the addition of TOT tax. Comments were received related to the application but focused more generally on short-term rental permits in the city as a whole, not specific to this application so much. Based on the reasons I just stated and those outlined in the staff report and draft resolution, staff recommends that the planning commission vote to approve the project as conditioned.
Anyone have any questions?
Oh, no, but I need to disclose that I was walking in the neighborhood trying to find it. I had written on the wrong address and the applicant saw me wandering around and thought, who is this in my neighborhood? And came out and asked me if she could help me. And so, I did meet her as the owner of the short-term rental applicant, I mean, as the applicant, just briefly, just enough to say hello and then went away. So, I need to disclose that. I also wanted to ask a question of staff. Is the 24-hour contact number as required to be on the website for this, for this applicant? Is it, I mean, is that happening right now, that there, that there are contact numbers?
There are contact numbers for all the current permit holders on the website.
And so, there would be for her?
There would be for her as well.
Okay, fine, thank you. That's what I wanted.
I have a question on the same thing. It seems that the ordinance calls for the contact number to be for a person, not an entity?
That's correct.
And the person has to be able to respond in 30 minutes?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not a robot.
So, we do have the, we will have a contact number of a person, not a management company?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a question for Ms. Bianco. Were there any comments from any immediate neighbors on Hudson?
No, we didn't receive comments from any of the immediate neighbors, none besides what was included in the staff report.
And they were noticed?
They were noticed, yeah. So, we sent out a notice of application for 30 days.
Okay.
And then they subsequently received a public hearing notice.
So, the only comments I've seen are from an individual that doesn't seem to reside in Saint Helena, is that correct?
That seems to be the case.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had another question on that. Were the renters in the area as well as the property owners noticed?
Yes, we noticed both. That's typical.
I have a different question. I see condition number 12 states that the permit is valid for two years and the owner must reapply for subsequent short-term rental permits to extend the use beyond this period. Is there a defined term for the extensions?
It's two years.
It's explained, it's explained in the ordinance, I think, listener.
Well, if I'd reviewed the ordinance, I wouldn't have asked the question, so.
It's two years. Every renewal, every permit holder is required to renew every two years.
Thank you.
Is there, is one, is this restriction from one renewal in? Or did that not get voted on?
No, it's not in.
Any further discussion? The applicant likes to speak?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. As I indicated in my little note that I put forward, I do travel a lot, unfortunately. As I indicated in my little note that I put forward, I do travel a lot, unfortunately. And so, during my travels, sometimes when they coincide with my vacation, the house is empty for about a month. So, in the past, just because I, you know, I lost my husband about eight years ago, and it's very difficult for me to afford all of the improvements that need to be done in the house. I started advertising the house for rent on a monthly basis. And during the times of, say, July, August, people do want to rent it out. And a couple of times, I had nice people come and stay at my house while I was traveling, and then combining with my, you know, trying to get out, and give him this full month. It turned out to be a really terrible idea. Once I came back and the house, the elderly couple who lived there for a month stored garbage in my garage, and I came back to rats. Horrible. Absolutely, I mean, I was completely devastated. And so, I, I cannot do that anymore. I will not do that. In fact, I will not do it anymore. So, this provides me with an opportunity to earn a little bit of money, keep, keep up the house while I'm traveling, and keep an eye on the house, you know, especially since someone, management company, will be taking care of it. I figured out that, that leaving people at the house for a month is not a good idea, not for me. I love my home. I will not, and I love my neighbors, I have to tell you, by the way. I am like, it's like my family. So, I will not jeopardize the community or neighborhood or any, any of that. I will be very, very, very picky about who I'm going to rent to. I hope you will approve my permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment is open.
I just want to say a few words in support of short-term rentals in general. I mean, I know we have the ordinance, so I'm happy that the city is, you know, starting to look at that list. And I originally fell in love with St. Helena by staying in a short-term, well, I stayed in a rental. It may not have been legal, but I didn't know that, I didn't know that at the time, so I plead innocence. But, but it is a fabulous way for our visitors to experience our fabulous town without staying in a hotel. I mean, they can, you know, go to Sunshine, they can cook meals, they can, you know, just, just enjoy a little bit of what it's like to live in St. Helena. And like I said, I, I fell in love with this town that way. And I, I think it's a great revenue source for the city and, and hope that when the circumstances are, are correct, you know, that, that some of these do get approved. Thank you.
Erin, can we find Ms. Hines for running an illegal short-term rental?
I'll, I'll look into that.
Gotcha, Donna. Any further discussion?
I, I'll have a little discussion on this. This seems like sort of the ideal applicant and really sort of the way that if our short-term rentals are to exist, it would seem to work. Someone who's a long-term owner, who is mostly there, occasionally not there, community-minded, neighborly-oriented. My concern for many of these applications, and the existing ones sadly, is that they are party central and can be very disruptive to people, you know, sort of vacation use is sort of incompatible with sort of long-term residential use. So, there, there are really, I think, a lot of issues that many communities have completely opted out of, including Healdsburg, because of, because of these problems. In this case, the neighbors seem to be unconcerned. That's a positive in my mind, and the only public comment is not, not here, and not, not that that's not important, all public comment is important, but doesn't seem to be responding to the direct, at least in my read. It's, it's hard for me to understand the direct response to this particular application. That's my two cents.
John?
I only have a few words to say. Move the staff recommendation.
Do I hear a second?
You could discuss the motion. Do I hear a second made?
Happy to second when the discussion's finished.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you?
I've never really been a fan of the short-term rental ordinance, but I appreciate Ms. Hines' comments about the positive element for visitors, and certainly the revenue has been important to the city. When I was reflecting this a minute while she was speaking, and surprised myself by recognizing that, well, it was after after Ms. Hines' comments and thinking about Commissioner Knudsen's comments, I had more aggravation from party houses when there were illegal short-term rentals in my neighborhood before the ordinance was adopted than I've ever had since. So, it may actually be that although I still think the short-term rentals, legal or illegal, compromise the residential character of the neighborhood, I think the ordinance may actually be a real improvement over the status quo ante, as one might say. And in any event, this project complies with all the requirements, and I think it's just fine.
Yeah, I, I think this project is fine. I don't have any problem with it. But I did have two concerns, and one of them was the reporting, and because we've had some, some arguments and some, some, I can't think of the word right now, but we've had neighborhood conflict in the past because neighbors complained that they reported to the police department noise from party, from party rentals, short-term rentals, which I don't think this one is going to be. But, but the police had no records, so I wasn't sure if that had been taken care of. So, I spoke, I spoke with Chief and Bon today, and what they have in place sounds absolutely adequate, completely adequate, and it's easy to go and find out any, any address in the town to find out how many complaints there have been over a period of years. And as, even with just the address, even if the reporting person doesn't know that it is a, a short-term rental. So, I was relieved about that. The other thing that I wasn't, that I was not happy about was that there were, had been talk at the city council level, and it had been agreed that they did not want clustering of these short-term rentals. And I think one of the city council members at the time had suggested a 700-foot radius between them, but that was not voted in. So, my sense is, I have no problem with this, this, this application, but my, I'm just wondering if we as a body can ask the city staff to take to the city council again a request to get some kind of objective metric to decide whether or not there is clustering, whether there are too many in one neighborhood. How are we going to decide that? Are we going to do it complaint-driven? Are we going to do it by something objective, like, you know, I, I wouldn't like to have that, the city council have that message. So, I'm just wondering if we, tonight, if we can, if you guys agree that we could ask the city staff to take that, that request to the city council after we vote for this.
We'd have to message the public on that.
Correct, that's an un-agendized item.
We can't ask you to take that.
Chair could direct. I think the, the response is that we can agendize this subject in order to give direction.
Okay, so, we can ask for that to be agendized, okay? If you guys are willing, I'd like to do that.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chair Kissner?
Yes.
I've got to ask them for all these big plans. I can't find anything anymore. Scheduled matters 6.1, consideration of amendments to the City, zoning court ordinance, St. Helena municipal code, title 17, potentially revising section 17148, signs to be consistent with current case laws determined appropriate by the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, 6.1.
The, the only thing we have now is the tentative agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so...
I picked up the wrong.
So, yes, we are, we're on item, agenda forecast, item 8.1, the tentative agenda. Coming up on the 17th, a couple of fun things we're bringing back, the use, the permitted and conditional use discussion for the central business district and the service commercial district, and we're also having the general plan EIR scoping meeting, and that's an opportunity for members of the public and agencies to...
I would suggest you schedule that first.
Okay, noted, so...
If it gets too long, we can always do the other thing.
Yep, so, this is just a comment on the content of the environmental analysis.
That's correct.
Yep, and that's all I have.
Erin, can, can we schedule a discussion of clustering or density of...
I, I'm not sure about that. I was trying to recall the, the council direction as far as that went, and I believe they decided not to do that because each, each permit is taken on a case-by-case basis, and they wanted them considered on a case-by-case basis. We can look into it.
Thank you.
Yep.